Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Whitehall City Council Meeting of Wednesday, May 7th, 2025. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Actually, a moment of silence before we begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Aug, would you please call roll?
Elmore?
Present.
Morrison?
Present.
Hatt?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
Harkar?
Present.
Dixon?
Brown?
Present.
President Potter?
Present. At this time, I'd accept a motion to excuse the absent member.
A second.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Smith, taken by Ms. Harkar for excuse the absent member. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Hatt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The absent member has been excused. Next, we've got the approval of the minutes, which include the April 8th, 2025 Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes, as well as the April 22nd, 2025 Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes.
President Potter, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Elmore for the approval of minutes. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Hatt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. At this time, we have several special presentations. First will be, actually, first two will be the mayor. First, recognizing Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month with a proclamation.
I'm going to do clerks first and then...
That's your prerogative.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll do our clerks first, just so we all know why. But how's everyone doing, House Counsel?
Good. Well, from my office, we all know that the role of the municipal clerk is one of the most respected and essential positions in local government, helping to keep our cities running smoothly and transparently. And this office has deep historical roots among the oldest in public service and remains as vital today as ever before. And whereas our municipal clerks serve as the bridge between residents, city council, the mayor's office, and other levels of government, ensuring that information is accurate, accessible, and delivered with integrity. And whereas the clerks like ours are committed to fairness and impartiality, delivering outstanding service to every resident without exception. And whereas the clerk of council and the clerk of court in the city of Whitehall are trusted resources, supporting both the day-to-day operations of city government and the long-term success of our community. And whereas these individuals continually seek ways to grow and improve through workshops, conferences, training, to better serve the public. Whereas it's important that we take the time to acknowledge and celebrate the meaningful impact of their work. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through the 10th as Municipal Clerks Week and proudly extend my heartfelt appreciation to Lorena A. Lacy, Clerk of Courts, and Julie Aug, Clerk of Council, for their dedication, service, and commitment to the people of Whitehall. Thank you. Thank you very much. And if I could have some of our... Oh, would you like to take a picture? Let's do a picture. Thank you.
That was Steve's eye.
And Counsel, can y'all get in this too? Like, stand up so you can be... Yeah.
Squeezing into your...
Be on the fringes. We'll get cropped.
Thank you. And if our esteemed guests could join me as I read this... Just make sure I don't block Mr. Hager right here. Just make sure I'm not standing in front of him, so you can see him. And so, whereas the city of Whitehall proudly joins the nationwide observance of Motorcycle Awareness Month, embracing the 2025 theme "Ride Right, Stay at the Fight", as we honor and support the dedicated riders, advocates, and organizations working to improve road safety, raise awareness, and eliminate barriers, bias, and misconceptions surrounding motorcycling in all communities. And whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of transportation recreation for thousands of residents in Ohio and across the country, including myself, who has motorcycles in his garage, and we just have to get joy to allow me. And whereas, in an effort to make motorcycling... That's not in the proclamation. In an effort to make motorcycling in our state a safer and more enjoyable experience, motorcycling organizations, clubs, and advocacy groups are working together to promote motorcycle awareness and safety. And whereas Ohio is recognized as a national leader in motorcycle registrations and manufacturing. And whereas it is essential for all citizens to be alert and watchful for motorcycles on streets and highways and to understand the importance of sharing the roads safely. And... Yeah, say that again. And whereas the city of Whitehall encourages motorcycle organizations, dealerships, safety officials, and riders to support efforts that include safe riding practices, comprehensive rider training, proper licensing, and ongoing public awareness and campaigns. And whereas, throughout the month of May, all drivers and riders are urged to work together to ensure the safe use of our roads. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Whitehall, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2025, as Motorcycle Awareness Month. And I encourage all residents to join in recognizing the contributions of motorcyclists and promoting safety for all who share our roadways. Thank you so much for joining me. So if we could get a picture together, I'll stand in the middle.
I need the picture.
No, you gotta get it?
Do you have a sign?
Oh, please, right here.
I want a sign. I don't think they can see me from my head.
Thank you. And these signs are for sale, as well as the magnets? Magnets? Magnets?
The magnets are free.
Okay. Well, you made that executive decision. Oh, okay. Well, no, thank you so much, both of you. Sure. Thank you.
Whereas the motorcycles, motorcyclists of Ohio are deeply appreciative of the mayor and doing this for us. And I'd especially like to thank Deanna for helping me get that proclamation together. And we really appreciate the fact that Whitehall is helping us promote motorcycle safety and awareness. And whereas we're out of here.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. If anyone is interested in a word sign or magnet, please just write your name and phone number down, and I'll make sure Mr. Fuzee gets one to you.
Yes.
You can leave it with our congratulatory. And he will make sure that you get one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next presentation is Jim Schreiner from Broaden James Towing. If you'd like to come forward.
Sure. Yeah, so that the public can hear. All right. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank President Potter and the city council for hearing what I have to say. I'm Jim Schreiner with Broaden James Towing. We've been in business in the area for 53 years. But anyway, while I'm here, I have two parts to present to you this evening. Hopefully, you guys will help me go forward with both of them. But it's been 10 years since the city of Whitehall has raised its towing and impound and storage fees. It was last raised in the year 2015. Towing and impounding storage rates need to be adjusted to offset this historic period of rapid inflation. The towing industry has seen significant price increases that outpaced simple CPI adjustment. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics CPI Inflation Calculator, the price of $155 tow in March of 2015 should cost $207.22 in October of '24. The cost of doing business in the towing and recovery industry has increased significantly over the past 10 years. The costs for the last five years have increased extraordinarily. Unprecedented disruptions in the supply chain, historic rise in inflation, national labor shortage are just a few of the impediments of doing business brought on by COVID-19 and the ongoing wars in Ukraine, the Middle East, and now there's a threat of tariffs. In addition to fuel being up over 60% since 2015, the price of tires has risen roughly 70%, and the cost of insurance has risen approximately 47%. I actually enclosed a copy of my insurance, one of my insurance bills, and a recent tire purchase for one of our tow trucks in a pack that should have been handed out to you guys, hopefully. The price of tow trucks and equipment has greatly increased. We recently paid $40,000 more for a tow truck than we did for a similar tow truck in the year 2015. Without a substantial increase to the towing, impound, and storage rates, there is less of an incentive for professional towing companies to provide the 24-hour emergency response the Whitehall police have grown accustomed to. When contemplating a rate increase, the city council should consider approximately one of three vehicles impounded or towed from an accident are not retrieved by the owner. They are abandoned on the towing company's storage lot. And the towing company does not get paid for those tow's or storage. And the money received from scrapping the vehicles almost never comes anywhere near the tow and storage bill. Broaden James currently tows for several surrounding municipalities and the Franklin County Sheriff. Some of these include Gehenna, which is rated for them as $211.42; Reynoldsburg, which is $211; and the Franklin County Sheriff, which is $170.50 for the tow and additional $40.92 administration fee for each tow. It is imperative that towing companies receive fair compensation for the 24-hour emergency response we provide the Whitehall police. It is important for employees to receive a fair wage and decent benefits. Since there are significant differences in the towing and towing different-sized vehicles, we are proposing a three-tier rate system for towing and storage. First rate would be for a GVW of 10,000 pounds or less of $207 and $29 per day storage. For 10,001 pounds to 26,000-pound GVW, $400 to $39 for per day storage. And for GVW of 26,000 pound and above, $558 per day storage. There's a big difference between towing a Toyota Camry, a Chevy box truck, and a Freightliner semi-truck with a reefer trailer on the back. We are requesting an annual CPI adjustment for each year the CPI increases in order to address future expense adjustments. Extra charges should be considered for electric vehicles due to the increased training needed and the extra risk involved and the separate storage which is required for those. Are there any questions or is there any information I can provide you guys further on this part of my proposal?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, the $207, the $400, or the $500 is charged to the city and the storage is charged to the owner? Or how does that work?
No, the city actually pays nothing on this.
Okay, it's the owner that comes?
Correct. This is just for the owner of the impounded or the wrecked vehicle. There's a separate contract, actually, for the city vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that part?
Did you say Gehenna and Reynoldsburg were both at $211?
Correct. Correct.
Oh, I see that in here now. Thank you.
Shall I go on to part two?
Please.
All right. We believe this... City of Whitehall, this is something that happened to change, I don't know, I'd say, five years ago or so. For, again, we've been towing for Whitehall for probably, I guess, close to 30 years. But the city of Whitehall all of a sudden let a bunch of towing companies on from all around the county. And I don't think it's very conducive for your constituents and your police departments. But I'll go through that. We believe the city of Whitehall council should address setting some parameters for towing and recovery companies wishing to work for the city of Whitehall. We think the city of Whitehall owes its officers and citizens a reputable towing company with reputable drivers and responsible employees. The towing companies should be required to meet certain minimum standards. The office and storage lot should be located within three miles of the Whitehall city limits. And again, that's for your constituents. There's no reason for them to travel. You currently have companies on the north end of Columbus, the west side of Columbus, and it's just not very conducive for, you know, for, first of all, for response time for your police departments and, secondly, for your constituents if they have to travel to the north side of Columbus for a vehicle that was in an accident. They should be in business a minimum of five years, operate a lighted storage lot with a minimum six-foot-high fence capable of storing a minimum of 100 vehicles with inside storage available, a separate area to store electric vehicles. Electric vehicles have a tendency, it is possible for them to catch fire when they're being stored if they're around other vehicles, and the other vehicles go up also. They should own or lease a minimum of three trucks, including at least one light-duty wrecker, one rollback, and a 16-ton or larger wrecker for towing the bigger trucks. And all the trucks must meet the PUCO requirements. I can tell you from personal experience, I saw a company picking up an impound for the city of Whitehall, no name on the side of the truck. It looked like a pickup truck with a wheel lift underneath it. Man, I thought that shows little to very, almost little to no professionalism. They should maintain an 80% acceptance rate of calls each month and maintain an average maximum ETA of 20 minutes per call each month. They should have onsite personnel to release vehicles and personal belongings during normal business hours and be available to release vehicles seven days per week. Drivers should be required to wear, tow truck drivers should be required to wear high-visibility uniforms, which is an OSHA requirement. The company should maintain workers' compensation on all employees and have a minimum insurance liability of $1 million with on-hook coverage. And all companies should be required to meet the PUCO requirements. And I'm open to any other issues you think we should address or how you think we should proceed from here on those two proposals.
I would like to kind of do some more research. Is there a way to get ahold of you if we do have more questions once now that we've seen your presentation?
Yes, I actually left some business cards out in my truck. I can bring those in and pass them out.
Okay, yeah, if you want to go out later and just even hand them to Julie.
Yep. I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that would be, as far as further discussion, that would be a party discussed at committee meetings, which will be next Tuesday.
Is there anything I can do to facilitate that, to keep it going?
Well, we would talk amongst yourselves, and then if we have any questions, we would certainly...
All right, I'll bring the business cards in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
We'll now move into standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President.
What's going around?
Administration and Financial Management met April 22nd. Our minutes are on file. We have several pieces of legislation this evening. We will meet again next Tuesday at 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harkar.
Yes, thank you, President Potter. We also met on April 22nd. It feels like that was a long time ago. We don't have any drafts or pending legislation this evening. We'll meet again next week.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Community Standards and Enforcement met, it seems like a lifetime ago, three weeks ago. Our minutes are on file. I do not believe we have any legislation on the agenda this evening, and we'll meet again next week.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon is not here, so Ms. Smith will be covering for him.
Economic and Development also met three weeks ago. Their minutes are on file. They do not have any legislation on the agenda currently, and we'll meet again next week.
Very good. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Brown.
Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met on April 22nd. Our minutes are on file, and we plan to meet again next Tuesday at 6:30.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met April 22nd. Our minutes were on file, and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. And Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Hatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met on April 22nd. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Now we'll move into official reports, first being Mayor Bibas.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and everyone that's here this evening. Just from the mayor's office, I would like to first congratulate our Whitehall City Schools for a very successful state of the district. I thought that Superintendent Wells did a fantastic job of just telling the story of our schools and really highlighting the improvement in the report card. But there's one issue that I wanted to bring out publicly to members of council, as well as to the members of our public. There was a statistic that she put in her presentation with respect to our students and, in particularly, the rate of poverty amongst our students. As you know, we have over 3,100 students that are matriculating right now throughout Whitehall City Schools. And out of those three... Now, let me give you another perspective. In the city of Whitehall, we are currently at around 17% to 18% rate of poverty for all of our residents. That being said, in our schools, in particularly, she estimates, not just estimates, she put it out there as a bold number, that 73% of our students in our Whitehall City Schools are currently living in poverty and experiencing poverty in the city of Whitehall. The reason why I bring that out is because I believe it's one of my mandates, and I talk to my staff often about how to eradicate that. And I'm speaking to you, members of council, as well as members of the public. That is a statistic that we all need to be concerned about, and we all need hands-on deck to do something about it. One of the great resources that I would like to recommend that we all wrap our minds around and wrap our collective intelligence around is the Franklin County Rise Together Blueprint to End Poverty. Commissioner Erica Crowley, Commissioner Kevin Boyce, and Commissioner John O'Grady did a fantastic job of putting out a very comprehensive document as it relates to that. And I'm asking, I'm pleading, all of the leadership in the city of Whitehall to wrap our hearts, minds around ending systemic barriers to poverty, including creating pathways to economic wealth and prosperity from housing to medical to all of those things. So when I saw that statistic, all I heard was an alarm, and I'm sounding the alarm for everyone in this room. Next, Ward 1. I would like to thank every member of Robinwood, Collingwood, and Maplewood that came out last night for our meeting as it relates to traffic calming. I've already set and spoken to the staff about budget for 2026. Yes, I'm thinking about budget for 2026 right now. As you all know, budget and fiscal management is top of my priority list. And in that, we are making a commitment to try to figure out what we can come to council with when we do appropriations and we ask council for infrastructure appropriations for 2026 to put Maplewood, Collingwood, and Robinwood on that appropriation. So we've asked the residents of those streets to come in and do a focus group, as well as to let us know what they're experiencing. And we offered some possible solutions, but it was a very preliminary meeting and more to come. But I just wanted to speak publicly, that was a very successful meeting, and I wanted to thank the citizens that came out to that. It was just great. And then lastly, I would like, I know we're here on a Wednesday. It might feel like Tuesday, but I would like to congratulate all of the candidates that ran successful campaigns, as well as the candidates that did not. It takes a lot of heart to run for public office. And I hope that to any person that was not successful in yesterday's election, I hope that you stay involved. I hope that you contact me personally. I hope that we can continue to have discussions about doing everything that we can to make sure that every single resident in Whitehall moves forward together. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Nick Ademus is not with us this evening, although he did ask me to read the following statement. On April 30th, 2025, petitions for the referendum on ordinances 9/2025, 10/2025, and 11/2025 were filed with me. Those petitions were delivered to Franklin County Board of Elections for signature verification. On May 5th, I received communication from the Board of Elections that the verification was complete and letters certifying the number of ballot signatures. On May 6th, I obtained the petitions to determine their sufficiency for charter requirements. Earlier today, the Clerk of Council received notice from me that the petitions are sufficient and therefore ordinances 9/2025, 10/2025, and 11/2025 are not enacted until approved by the voters. At the future meeting, council will have to pass a resolution to set the election date as November 4th, 2025, or at the special election date and place these matters on the ballot. Council members may contact me with specific questions if they have any. Additionally, on April 30th, 2025, a petition for a citizen initiative ordinance was filed with me. The proposed ordinance would create Fairway Boulevard overlay district. This, too, was sent to Board of Elections for signature verification and then reviewed by me. While I have some questions and concerns, should this initiative ordinance be enacted, the charter does not permit denial of the initiative for legal concerns. Therefore, this petition, having met the requirements of the charter, was also determined to be sufficient. The proposed ordinance will be submitted to council for its next regular meeting on May 20th, 2025, and I will provide council with information about the initiative process and answer any questions at a future time and meeting. Thank you for reading this report on my behalf. That is that. Next, we have Auditor Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I have no official report tonight, other than I just want to ask for favorable consideration of ordinances 35 and 38, 2025.
Thank you. That brings us to Director of Public Service, Rowland.
Mr. President, I just want to echo the sentiments that the mayor said about the Ward 1 traffic forum that we had yesterday. It was really nice to see a positive turnout for our residents to come out and voice their opinion, hear what we had to say, and hopefully, moving forward, we can collaborate, not only on Maplewood, Robinwood, and Collingwood, but throughout the city, moving forward. Other than that, I just ask for a favorable consideration for ordinance 38, 2025, and resolution 15, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Public Safety, Greg, is not with us this evening. Treasurer Alexander is also not with us this evening, which brings us to the following official reports been filed in the council office since the last meeting. There's one item listed, which is the treasurer's reports for December 2024 and January through March 2025. Under communications, petitions, and claims, we have three items. First being notice to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new D-3A license for Fresh Corner Store LLC, DBA Fresh Corner Store LLC, 4295 and 4297 East Main Street, Whitehall, Ohio 43213. Second item is agenda for the May 12th, 2025, BZBA meeting. And the final item is minutes from the April 14th, 2025, BZBA meeting. This now brings us to our first poll public of the evening. I invite anyone to come forward. The rules remain, you'll have three minutes to speak. Need for you to state your name and to sign in.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, elected officials, and neighbors. My name is Mike Shannon. I'm here on behalf of my client, JDS Companies, Mr. Daniel Schmidt. I'm here this evening to respectfully ask the city council to consider reconsideration of the three ordinances mentioned in Mr. Nick Ademus's correspondence to you regarding the referendum. Under the codified ordinances of Whitehall, you are charged to follow the Roberts Rules of Order. And under those rules, we have the right to come in and make this request of council. We think that if this ordinance is reconsidered and perhaps tabled to a date certain, that it would give us time to respond to some of the issues and make modifications that may make the proposal more palatable. I respectfully request your consideration of that matter. And under the rules, it is recommended that you speak at the beginning of a city council meeting, such as I am doing, to make that request. And it would require a member of council who is on the prevailing side of the April 15th vote to make a motion. It would have to be seconded and voted upon, and there would have to be a second... would have to be a second vote if it is in fact reconsidered to table it to a date certain. We need about 30 days, and we would suggest June 17th. And respectfully, I make that request on behalf of my client, consistent with your codified rules and regulations and Roberts Rules of Order. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce-
Let's finish poll public.
Okay.
We have to verify your copies. Anybody else wish to come forward for poll public? Okay, hearing nothing. Ms. Aug, would you please call roll as to whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation?
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, based upon the information from poll public, I'd like to move for introducing, I guess I need to introduce the legislation, and move for reconsideration and suspend all rules. So the ordinance is 009, 2025, and that would be, do I need to reorganize the Fairway? I need to read it. Okay. But yes, I'd like to introduce that ordinance, move for reconsideration-
And suspension of all-
And suspension of all rules.
Is there a second on that?
We have discussion on that?
You can certainly have some discussions.
Okay. This is new to me, so I would want to make sure what we would be doing. So if we were to agree to do that, what does that look like? Then the people who just put together the referendum, deeper work, like-
Okay, so-
I really would want me to understand-
So, okay, then see if I can explain. So what happens is if this moves forward for reconsideration with the emergency clause, it does that. It gives it for the reconsideration and then with the date certain as requested. Then as far as the referendum, that is a parallel issue, but these two do not touch each other at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so the folks that are going for the referendum on those pieces of legislation, that still moves forward because we've not taken any action on this, on the reconsideration. So what's-
So we're not interfering with-
It will not impact what they're, at this point, it's not going to impact what they're doing.
Okay. Only if it moved forward and a change was made-
Then potentially, yes, potentially so.
Could potentially impact it. Okay.
Tonight, tonight is not a vote on anything, but on June 7th, if there were to be a change in our votes on the issues, that would change.
Correct.
I see.
Oh, sorry, my bad. I wrote 7.
Yes. So the request tonight is just to reconsider it and then, and they're motion to make to date specific of June 17th, and then it would be voted on at that point.
Because I would like to see what modifications they're talking about, and they haven't-
Correct. That'll give the developer time to make the modifications and have conversation.
I just want to make sure we weren't going against what people had done.
No, we're not voting to move forward with that project, and we're not impounding or impacting, thank you, the referendum. That will remain untouched.
For now, though, you're saying?
For now, correct.
Where as if we were to move forward, if, I don't know what the change would be exactly, but if we were to have whatever changed, then you're saying that at that point, how would that impact things moving forward?
Well, so if this, so if the changes the developer proposes are favorable to council, so when it comes to council, then they decide, well, you know what, we like these changes, we like to vote for this, then they can do so. And then, provided it passed, then the referendum would no longer have any course of action because council may-
I hope that they won't.
Correct. Well, if it passes with the emergency. Now, if it doesn't pass with the emergency like it did this last time, then the referendum would still move forward.
They wouldn't have to do anything additional. They would, it would just continue-
No, no, that will still, no, no, that would not require any reorganization on their part.
So if it got reconsidered and it came to a vote again and it only went to a vote that only four people-
A simple majority.
Then these people's referendum that they already have currently would still be able to move forward as is.
Correct, correct. It's just five votes. If had the emergency, as you know, it'd go into effect immediately.
I think this would have been a good conversation for committee next week instead of today.
Because of Roberts Rule, we have to vote on it today, correct?
Yeah.
Just for the reconsideration. Just to reconsider, that's all we're voting on, just reconsideration.
Sorry, doesn't matter, like because of how it works.
Purely procedural, and I can only make the request this evening under Roberts Rules.
So, yeah, so basically, nothing has changed, other than the fact that council's agreed to reconsider it and nothing more.
So we've given them, we're giving them 30 additional days to present new or further evidence if they feel that they can receive, and they hope to receive more favorable votes on the 17th.
Correct. That's, which may or may not happen.
There's no guarantee.
Of course.
Do we, do we have any idea of what those changes to the development plan would be that would be more palatable?
I don't believe that's a proper matter for substantive discussion on a procedural motion. I have an idea, but I have no idea how concrete they are. We've thought about a number of issues. But again, this is procedural, and to get into the substance would be inappropriate. Obviously, we've heard all of the public comments for quite some time, and we're going to look and see what, if anything, we can change. And you'll have the same opportunity that you had historically without impacting their referendum rights by this action you take here this evening.
Would the community have a chance to, would there be like another poll public hearing for people to-
There should be a poll public, but not a public hearing.
I just want to make sure I fully understand.
The public hearing has already occurred for these pieces of legislation. There would absolutely be poll public.
It would go for its three readings as any other legislation goes, and they could come and do poll public.
It would be put on the agenda with the normal notice requirements for the agenda.
Just want to be a hundred percent sure.
No, no, that's a good question. Excellent question.
Yeah, so no, we're taking no action to do anything to upend the referendum or any action to move this piece of legislation, or these three pieces of legislation forward, just to reconsider it to give the developer and council time to make some modifications.
Each piece of legislation requires an independent vote. Thank you.
Okay.
Procedure, don't get into the weeds. It's procedure.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Aug, would you please call roll?
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
I'm staying.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, it has been accepted for reconsideration?
I'd like to, because I need to do all three.
Yeah, you need to go back because you now want to table that to date to second.
Yeah, I want to table that to move to table to June 17, 2025.
Ordinance 9, 2025.
Right.
Yeah, I know, but I was just-
Okay, okay.
Ms. Harkard, did you want to second that as well?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
I'm staying.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 9, 2025 has been tabled until June 17th.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce 10, 2025, and move for reconsideration and suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
I'm staying.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. That has been approved.
I'd like to move to table till June 17, 2025.
Again, just say the ordinance again.
Ordinance 10, 2025.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
I'm staying.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Ordinance 10, 2025 has been tabled until June 17.
Mr. President, finally, I'd like to ask for reconsideration on ordinance 11, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harkard. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
I'm staying.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. President, I would like to move to table ordinance 11, 2025 until June 17.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harkard to table ordinance 11, 2025 until June 17. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
I'm staying.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 11, 2025 has been tabled until June 17.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. At this time, I will accept a motion to accept an amendment to Article, okay, Article 13, Public Participation in the Rules of Procedure for the 24-25 term, which was spelled out, written statement submission. You must submit a written statement that is no longer than 400 words, which is approximately three minutes of speaking time. The statement must be submitted to the clerk of council by 8:00 a.m. on the day of the council meeting. Keep in mind that these statements should be submitted only for council meetings, not for council committee meetings. And then the poll public section of the meeting, at the beginning of each poll public section, the council president will announce how many statements were received by the council office. And then the president will also confirm these comments will be included in the official meeting minutes, making them accessible for the public to view at any time.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendment to Article 8 of the Rules of Procedure.
Thank you.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Heck for the approval of the amendment to our council rules of procedure for 2024-2025 term. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The amendments have been approved. Yeah, we did very patient. Thank you. Under third reading, we have got no legislation this evening. Under second reading, we have got no legislation. Under first reading, we have several items. First, we have ordinance 34, 2025, authorizing and approving an amendment to the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, 161, Table of Authorized Personnel for the fiscal year 2025, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, President. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 34, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Harkard for the introduction of ordinance 34, 2025, and suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
I'd like to move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. Harkard. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 34, 2025 has been adopted. Ordinance 35, 2025, authorizing and approving an appropriation in amount of $126,716.36 from unappropriate monies in the mayor's department grants fund 215 to the food truck inclusion grant expense account 215.000.50,000, and declaring an emergency. I'm sorry, there is no emergency. I'm so used to saying that.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 35, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison for the introduction of ordinance 35, 2025, and for its adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 35, 2025 has been adopted.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Ordinance 35, 2025 has been adopted. Ordinance 36, 2025 has been polled by councilperson
Dixon. That brings us to ordinance 37, 2025, which will be read by title only, amending Section 1103.02, the planning and zoning code of the city of Whitehall. Ordinance 38, 2025, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $115,000 from unappropriate monies in the general fund 101 to the fire department building repair and maintenance expense account 101.970.53,000.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 38, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
No suspension.
Oh.
You just want to move for the adoption.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
No, there's suspension.
There's suspension, but a doc.
There's suspension, but a doc.
This is first reading.
Yeah, but we don't have, we don't have to do, for financial items, we don't have to put the emergency on there.
We sort of suspend.
Suspend, I'm sorry, yes, suspend. I'm getting-
It's Wednesday.
Yeah, thank you.
We cannot have a two-week break again.
It's okay.
All right, okay.
You're not used to short agendas.
Yes, I'm not. Okay, so I stand corrected. Ordinance 38, 2025 has been introduced by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, and asking for the suspension of rules.
Yes.
Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 38, 2025 has been adopted. Our final piece of legislation is Resolution 15, 2025, creating a seasonal labor apprentice program, SLAP, and authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of $20,000 from unappropriate monies in the general fund 101 to the street maintenance repair 201, fund 201, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation of $20,000 from street maintenance and repair fund 201 to seasonal labor apprentice program expense account 201.000.56,000, and declaring an emergency. Yes, I'm, I'm-
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 15, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been an introduction by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce Resolution 15, 2025, and for the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Brown?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution 15, 2025, has been adopted. This brings us to our second poll public of the evening, and again, invite everybody to come forward. See nothing? We now have community date board.
Okay. There is still signups going on for summer camp. You can go over the city's, the Parks and Parks website to sign up for those. There's the city kickball tournament at John Bishop on May 30 from 6 to 8. You can sign up for that. It will be music game and food, have a team, friendly competition. Walk with the Doc is every third Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the senior centers where they meet, and then there's a fun upcoming event, Discover the Fascinating World of Birds on Saturday, May 17 at noon at John Bishop Park. And then there is a Skills and Drills Street Hockey for ages 5 through 10. You can visit the website for more information. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Also, Police Officer Memorial Ceremony tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. at the police station.
Ms. Harkar, you know it's going to be looking at you.
No, Mr. Morrison got it, so we're good.
Okay. Have to make sure everybody is recognized. We'll now move on to poll council. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for the proclamations on Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. It is very, very important to watch our motorcyclists when they're on the highways and byways. Oftentimes, people don't pay attention, so thank you for that, and we need to keep our motors safe. Also, the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week Proclamation. Congratulations to Lorena Lacy and to Julie Aug. You guys do a fabulous job. You keep us in order, you keep everything organized for us, Julie, and thank you so much for your hard work and your dedication. Also, thank you, Mr. Schreiner, for your presentation and the information that you provided for us today. I just want to thank everybody in attendance today, those that are watching, and I am looking forward to seeing some modifications or whatever needs to happen with regards to, we'll wait close. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to thank everyone who showed up and participated in this meeting here, and thank everyone for watching at home. Everyone have a good week and safe week. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Heck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody watching from home and people that came in today. Thank you also to the mayor for the proclamation for the motorcycle safety awareness month. I didn't realize that was in May, so good information, and thank you for the proclamation for the Professional Municipality Clerk's Week, and a special thank you to Julia and Lorena, they do a wonderful job, and also for Jim Schreiner taking the time to come in and give us the presentation. That is all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, President Potter. I want to say congrats to A Great Race, to all the candidates from War Two.